So would you please stand for the prayer? Thank you. Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light. Enlighten our minds, receive your guidance, so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of this county, whether as elected member or as an officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. Evacuation procedure. In the event of having to evacuate, officers will be able to advise and be on hand to assist any people with disabilities. Mobile phones. I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off, so that they will not disturb this meeting. Agenda item number one, Chairman's announcements. Armed Forces Week. Monday, 23rd of June marks the start of the Armed Forces Week, and Elizabeth Lee, who works in the County Council's Health and Safety section, raised the Armed Forces Day flag at a ceremony at Stand Easy. Elizabeth was in the RAF and has represented the United Kingdom at the Invictus Games in 2023 and 2025. On Saturday, 28th of June, together with the Lord Lieutenant and Lord Mayor of Leicester, I attended the Armed Forces Day in Leicester City. There was a parade through the city centre, service personnel, veterans, the C4 Highlanders and cadets. Following the parade, there was an outside drumhead service in Jubilee Square. It was a very moving occasion. County service. I will be hosting my county service at St John the Baptist in Hugglesco in October, and all members will receive an invitation in due course. I do hope you'll be able to come to join me. Victory in Japan. On Thursday, 14th of August, there'll be a service at Leicester Cathedral to mark victory in Japan and the ending of the Second World War. I will be representing the County Council, but all members will also receive an invitation. Civic life. Since the council meeting in May, where you elected me as chairman, I have attended a number of events representing you and the council, and I have to say, it is generally a real pleasure to carry out this role. I look forward to continuing to represent you in the coming year. The highlight so far was meeting Her Royal Highness, the Princess Royal, when she came to Leicestershire on Monday, 23rd of June. Agenda item number two, minutes. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 14th of May 2025, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read, confirmed and signed. Mr Hamilton Gray, will you second?
Uh, seconded, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Gray. Agenda item number three, declarations of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. I assume that all members will wish to declare a disclosable pecuniary interest in the notice of motion on local government reorganisation. The Corporate Governance Committee on the 23rd of June approved the dispensation for all members to allow them to take part in any discussion and vote on any matter relating to the office they hold at the County Council, so all members will be able to stay in the room and vote on this matter. I would remind members that in accordance with Standing Order 2.03, they must act in the capacity to which they were elected to the County Council, and not speak on behalf of any other local authority whilst acting as a County Council. Are there any other declarations? Thank you. Agenda item number four. These are questions asked under Standing Order 7, 1, 2 and 5. The questions and replies set out in the order paper will be taken as read and entered into the minutes. I have received notice of supplementary questions from Mr Mulaney, Mrs Taylor, Mr Orson, Mr Polan, Mr Smith and Mrs Bottomley. Oh, sorry, and Mr Page. Mr Smith, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question E?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, the leader, for the reply to my question. Now, whilst I welcome the review, it's clear that speculation about ending flexible or remote working is already unsettling staff, particularly with high-profile comments with such figures like Lee Anderson MP gaining traction in the media. We risk losing experienced and skilled employees if uncertainty is allowed to drift on. So for clarity and to give the staff the reassurance that they deserve, can the leader confirm whether he is, in principle, in favour of flexible working policy at Leicestershire County Council? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman. I understand that the smarter working policy, which defines the different working arrangements for the County Council employees, was approved by the Employment Committee in 2015. Although it's been adopted since, particularly during Covid, it would be appropriate to review the policy 10 years on.
A leader. Sorry, may I interrupt? I think it's a supplementary question. Um, the question, what you're reading out is taken into the, is already taken as read. So I think it's a supplementary question. I don't know whether you want to return to that in writing, or whether you have, whether you can address that today. Would you like to just say the question again?
Thank you for that closing, Mr Chairman. So, leader, whilst I welcome the review, it's clear that speculation about ending flexible or remote working is already unsettling staff, particularly with high-profile comments from figures like Lee Anderson MP gaining traction in the media. We risk losing experienced and skilled employees if uncertainty is allowed to drift on. So for clarity and to give the staff the reassurance that they deserve, can the leader confirm whether he is, in principle, in favour of a flexible working policy at Leicestershire County Council? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I'm in principle of flexibility, but I will allude at a later time that we are going to look at this in much greater depth to understand exactly what the requirement is. So this is over 10 years now, so I feel positively going into this. We'll review it openly and we'll see where we go from there. I've got more details in the other one that you've read. But yes, thank you.
Mr Polan, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question F, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you very much to the leader for your response. In the, in the answer, the leader talks about failure from the previous administration, but given Leicestershire was benchmark third out of 32 upper-tier authorities for overall performance in 2024, second for adult social care, second for highways and transport, with the Children and Families Department rated outstanding by Ostea just one year ago, does the leader really believe that represents failure?
Thank you very much, Mr President. Mr Harrison would like to speak?
Well, we're committed to a review. We have been all the way along. I suggested a review of efficiency throughout the campaign in various events, whether it was with media or with public gatherings, so, and the parties also. So all my colleagues support it as I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Orson, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question G, please?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman, and certainly I'd like to thank the lead member for his very comprehensive answer. And I have no doubt he is aware that MBC approved 368 homes and waived Section 106 amount into 1.8 million pounds. That would have supported vital infrastructure. 844,000 for the MMDR, 900,000 pounds for education, 48,000 for health services, not to mention the absence of contributions to libraries and other services. While viability assessments were accepted, the scale of the shortfall is significant. Has the administration made formal representation to MBC about this loss? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr Orson. Mr Fowler, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. With regards to Melton Mowbray Borough Council, as outlined in the answer already provided, there is a number of factors which affect whether the contributions are up to date or not. Naturally, the trigger points will change based on legal requirements, so things such as the first occupant of the dwellings. But we are in a working relationship with the district councils. Yes, they do need to make sure they're fulfilling their obligations and holding the developers to account. That much I agree on, but we do have a working relationship with them, and we are currently in talks with them, especially with regards to the changes and variations in a lot of the major developments that have come from the circular road around Melton Mowbray. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Fowler. Mrs Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question one? Is that I? I, I think, I.
Thank you very much. And yeah, I just really want to ask the leader, when is he actually going to make a decision on local government reorganisation? Obviously, we're hearing about lots of meetings going on, but we're now sort of in July, we're heading into the summer recess, and we're still no further forward than we were two months ago, and we're losing time. And we really need to be going out and consulting with our residents to get their view about how they feel about what's best for local government reorganisation in Leicestershire. So can the leader please confirm when we'll be going out for consultation? We all know it's important, but we need to get this done and dusted by November to give officers time to write our business case. So when will you make a decision?
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Harrison?
Well, I think you realise from my response initially, we are in discussions with the mayor. There are other people we have spoke to in the past, but this is critical. This is going to affect Leicestershire for probably the next 50 years. We've got to get this right. It's so critical that we get it right. I understand your concerns on pace, and that's fine, I accept that, but we've just got to be able to get this right, and we've got to know that what we're doing is right in so much as Leicestershire is confirmed. You know from what I've said, I believe that Leicestershire is important, and we believe a combined authority is appropriate, having tried to seek information and not get information from anywhere else. So we've had no option. I've asked, I've been told by other members, in fact Stuart, and he was really trying to help for, say, I'll talk to your chief and get him to notify you, but I've had nothing. So I've had to then take an executive view that we need to talk to who's appropriate. They're there, they're willing to talk. So we've had two meetings, and we'll continue those meetings, and we will try to establish. We've established a rapport, a proper professional rapport. We will then have to move on how we're going to resolve any of the difficulties. So we've said we are keen to talk and find with best effort answers, but it might not be at the pace you expected. But you've been through this, you know what it's like, but this time, we've been told it has to be right. Now, we've done things in the past and got known, so this time I want to make sure when we submit, and if it's with the city, that we've got two potential organisations of note and ability to be able to be recognised by government. So it is absolutely critical how we do this, and obviously you know the discussions with land and all sorts, because previously the Conservative group took a view that we'll go forward where we were going to give land in the past. I'm open-minded what we do, it's critical. But what I'm concerned about, if we sit back and actually did nothing, the city would have a fantastic case to be able to say it needs land. What I'm trying to say to you is, we will do it right because we want to be in charge of this, not leave it to some civil servant to say, oh no, we won't want this, want that. So it's important that the case we bring or take forward to government is going to be a case that we've got a good chance of winning. It's absolutely critical. So I apologise if the pace isn't to your liking, but I've also promised to talk to people and let them know on the journey where we're going with this. So I can't be any more fairer than that, Mr Chairman. I'm trying to be helpful, but I cannot rush it, and that's what I'm being invited to do, is to rush it. I will do it correctly, and we'll get it spot on, that people can then look at it and say, yes, we like that, that's a great idea. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mrs Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question J, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank the leader for his response. In the first paragraph of your question, you advised that it was political literature produced by the Reform UK Party Central Office, over which you local candidates litter control, but your own campaign Facebook page was pushing this political literature about the salary that the chief exec of this council thoroughly deserves. So maybe you should also apologise to the residents of Leicestershire, as well as your apology, which I think was very welcomed by the chief exec. Just going to the appointment of an interim chief exec, that will cost this council a huge amount of money to get an interim chief executive in. So will the leader reconsider that decision and move with haste towards the recruitment process for a new permanent chief exec for this council?
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Thank you. ... that we're aware, Chief Exec has kindly extended his retirement to November, which I asked him about, so that's wonderful. But I did apologise to the chief executive because lots of literature goes out, I was unaware, and I thought, well, I've never campaigned like that before. So I did apologise, and he accepted that apology. Reference going forward, it is critical, and we've got to think where we're moving, and if we are moving to other organisations, how we're going, not organisations, but we're going to change our shape through what we're happening in local government. So maybe something of a more temporary basis, uh, type of executive role than actually going out to the market straight away. So I think that's going to be the best way forward for us. So an interim temporary chief executive might be far better, and with less costs involved, it would probably be the way we go forward. I hope it's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Mulaney, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question K?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you to the cabinet member for the written response. The issues of road safety along Ashby Road and Normandy Way in Hinkley continue to be a matter of concern to local residents. I'm glad from the response that road safety issues in this area are going to be looked at as part of the Cluster Site Programme. Can I ask, I hope that any recommendations for safety improvements on these stretches of road will be fully implemented. I understand the financial pressures that the County Council is under, but if there are recommendations for road safety action to be taken on these roads, can I please ask that they will be fully implemented? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Mulaney. Mr Whitford, please respond.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, I'd like, thank you for the question. Of course, safety is always comes first, and I read in great details where we're going with this, and I completely agree with you. The safety is predominant, and it will be. I noted your comments, and I will take that and act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whitford. Mr Polan, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question L, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you very much to the lead member for the response provided. Very pleased to see that the power to delegate road closures to flood wardens is being progressed. I think that's something that would be very, very welcome to many flood wardens I've spoken to, I've spoken to them officially in my own patch, but also as part of my day job across the wider Melton and Syston area. The impact of vehicles going through floodwater and the bow waves that creates can be really devastating to houses, and sometimes it can exacerbate flooding, and sometimes it can actually cause flooding where there hadn't been previously. So when flooding occurs, we need the power to, the flood wardens to be able to close roads and do that quickly, in order to save property. So with that in mind, could I ask the lead member if it's possible for him to do everything he can to ensure this is in place in time for autumn, when the flooding season is likely to start again?
Thank you very much, Mr Polan. Mr Tilbury, please respond.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you for the question, Mr Polan. Well, firstly, I would say I'm in support of the proposal. It gives local people with local knowledge the chance to act quickly and decisively in devastating times of flooding. Myself and the lead member and the cabinet are already looking into that, and we are finding ways to strategically stop flooding, and I'll report back to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Tilbury. Mrs Bottomley, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question M, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, lead member, for your response. I welcome the proposed flood drop-in event and the summary of agreed actions in a timeline which can be shared with our community. However, as detailed in the original question, and having spoken with both the chair of the parish council and one of the flood wardens as early as this morning, they strongly dispute your statement that the lead local flood authority has remained in frequent contact with the parish council and the flood warden. Can you please clarify what the lead local flood authority considers frequent contact and what this looks like in practice? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Bottomley. Mr Tilbury, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Mrs Bottomley. I've asked the, the officers for a report of where we currently are on this report, and I would also say, if you've got any residents who are particularly concerned, direct them directly to me, and I'll find out and get a written report to you of what you asked. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Tilbury. Mrs Bottomley, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question N, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I apologise, this is again about local government reorganisation. We obviously have lots of questions here. Can the leader please clarify which proposal, if any, he is going to continue to pursue, or is he intending on working with Leicester City Council to potentially concede the extension of their boundaries and create a new proposal? How will this be communicated effectively with members, as currently there is a lot of confusion around transparency and the decision-making process? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Bottomley. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Thank you. I'd apologise, but we're doing everything we can to move at pace. We're starting from a zero position. Remember, I spent time, it was within the first two weeks of being leader of this authority, I went to a meeting of the leaders of seven, no, eight bodies in Leicestershire to discuss, and we agreed on an open transparency, which I've always suggested is the key to the whole project to this, to be open and transparent, and nobody came back to me. So now we're trying to find where we could work, and the logic is in Leicestershire, because nobody's coming up with anything to prove value in what they're doing and sustainability. So I've had to then think, right, so I know about unitary for Leicestershire, because I was here in 2019, when we were pioneering that approach. So now, I think, talking to the city, trying to see the agreements, we both think it's right to go forward as two entities, but we've now got to get down to the more practical and the understanding, and we haven't done that as yet. So that's the key, and as we move over the next two or three weeks, we'll start to understand each other's needs and how we can accommodate it, and whether it's practical. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Harrison. Onto our last question. Mr Page, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question, I think it's C, is it? Q, sorry, Q.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I'm a bit perplexed by the written answer I received from the leader, so I'd like to ask a further question. With no plan, no decisions and no idea how to fund a tax cut, was your election promise ever real, or are you about to renege on that commitment? If you're not, something else has to give. So will it be cuts in school bus services, cuts in home visits to the elderly who've suffered catastrophic falls at home, cuts to send places, or perhaps will it be cuts to mental health services? There is perhaps one other option. Is it possible that the leader is waiting for Nigel and his Doge Stooges, none of whom are, in my view, qualified to even clean the shoes of our excellent officers here at County Hall, I might add, to try to find the secret money tree that they're all convinced is lurking here, and perhaps it's disguised as a flagpole? So leader, renege on election promises, impose massive cuts to services, or go find the money tree? Which is it to be? Because the people of Leicestershire have a right to know.
Thank you, Mr Page. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Indeed, thank you. No, really, the history is that your party had cuts. This party isn't going to cut services. I'm going to tell you straight, it's nice to stand up and it's all full of flowery comments and lots of this and that. The truth is this, that we're in part going through, a part of our move in this operation towards a strategic overview of the whole efficiency of Leicestershire County Council. That was what we said we'd do, and that's what we are doing, because through that we should be able to manage a better budget. Remember, we've inherited a hard job to follow. We've got the 90-odd million that's in the budget at the moment running forward, we've also got probably 60 million of send value that the government said it might pay half, it might pay all, or it might pay none. So there's difficulties left here that we're dealing with, but trust me, we are proceeding at pace to move forward, to talk to people who could come in and provide us with this service. So I can only tell you that, I won't say any more, but we will be doing something. So I hope one day you can stand up and say I feel a right fall, because what you've done is fantastic, because what you did was to cut services. Now, remember that, you wasn't here, you've walked in and somebody's gave you a lovely script, but you were able to cut back over the years because we haven't been able to fund what we're doing. So that's what we were told, and that's what we actually did, was to look at things. Mr Smith, smiling, he was on one of the committees where we were cutting services and grants. So there he is. And it wasn't how many years back when you were on top of an open deck, buzz, going around with Nigel and waving? He was there, this is about his third party now. So come on, let's be honest, it's no good offering bull, we're offering fact. Sit tight, and we will show you what we're going to do. And now let's hope you approve it when we come forward to do it. Let's hope you will do that, Mr Chairman. I look forward to their comments in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison, that was quite a response, thank you. That's the end of the questions, so I'm going to go on to agenda item number five, to receive position statements from members of the cabinet. I've got here there are no position statements, but I'd like to ask Mrs Taylor to comment, that's okay. Oh, sorry, apologies.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I make my point, I'd just like to congratulate all the former County Councils, including Dr Felton on being made alderman. I'm also, I'm the new member for Gertrude, so I've got obviously a big axe to follow. But I just wanted to make the point, that you've just read it out, Chairman, there's no position statements. No position statement from the leader, although he just had a lot to say about things in response to a question, and no position statements from any of his cabinet, which again, I, and I'm sure all a lot of the other members in the room, as well as residents and taxpayers across Leicestershire, would be very surprised that, given all the comments you've just made about your programme and the critical issues that you identified yourself, such as local government reform, recruitment of a replacement chief executive head of paid service, MTFS, local government funding review 2.0, SEND, you've got nothing else to say, you've got nothing to tell us about it. You've got lots to complain about from when you were a councillor, voting through the budgets which you now say you don't agree with, but it's very surprising and concerning, given there isn't another full council meeting now until September, so presumably you won't be telling us anything until that meeting, or are you not going to come forward with the position statements at that meeting either? Either way, you're letting down the residents, you're letting down the members in this, in this forum by not telling us what you're... by not telling us what your programme is, what you're doing about things. Instead, you're just responding to questions that are having to put in and that what that's doing is it's preventing debate, it's preventing discussion by all of us to question and scrutinise what you're proposing by not putting any statements out. And Chairman, I do think that's something that is not acceptable to me as a County councillor and I do urge the Leader to think again and make sure that when it comes to the next meeting, there is a position statement from him and from his lead members in the Cabinet on all these really important issues so we can actually have a proper discussion and debate, as I'm sure from what you've just said you want us to do. But if that doesn't happen at the next meeting, I think that will be a very, very serious matter. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Mr. Harrison, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I understand the point of view but when you listen to the amount of volume of information we've imparted, we've really gone through masses amount that what we could say, we've already said, we've told you in the questions, we've told you all the way through and by our next meeting, hopefully we'll even have more to tell you and you'll find that even more interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Report of the Cabinet. A Local Transport Plan Four. As this item was approved by the Cabinet during the previous administration, I would call on Mrs. Taylor to move the motion on the order paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to move the motion on the order paper that the Local Transport Plan Four, attached in there that the consultation with the Cabinet Lead Member be authorised to update the LTP four and I think while I'm here before Reform go on Facebook and tell them how wonderful they are in bringing this forward, it was actually our administration that brought this forward, I just want to pay tribute to Ozzy who was the driving force behind this. He's worked really hard with officers on it, so I think the credit definitely goes to Ozzy and I hope that everyone else in this chamber realises that and supports us going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Poland, will you second the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very happy to second the motion.
Thank you so much. We will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mrs. Taylor, please raise their hands. It's unanimous, thank you so much. Motion is passed. B Local Nature Recovery Strategy. I'll call on Mr. Tilbury to move the motion on the order paper.
I move the motion. And I won't take any credit for this strategy because it did happen before I got in, but I'm delighted to share with you the Local Nature Recovery Strategy for Leicestershire, Leicester and Rutland. The strategy is a culmination of over three years of work by officers from Leicestershire County Council and from the supporting authorities of Leicester City Council, Rutland Council and local district councils, as well as staff from DEFRA bodies of the Environment Agency, Forestry Commission, Natural England and National Forest Company. Not to mention that the representatives and staff from a wide range of partner stakeholder organisations, including the National Farmers Union, the Leicestershire and Rutland Wildlife Trust, Nature Spot and Angleton Water, to name just a few. This Local Nature Recovery Strategy is one of the first of forty-eight such strategies approved in England and the quality of the final strategy has been greatly assisted by the amazing input from the people of the area, with over a thousand responses received to the consultation survey that helped inform the development of the strategy. Over sixteen hundred comments were received during this public consultation exercise, many of which helped improve the final strategy. There is a great public support for the strategy with ninety-seven per cent of respondents agreeing with the strategic aims of the strategy. The strategy builds on the efforts, knowledge, expertise and passion of those that have worked to protect and enhance nature across the area for decades. As a responsible authority for the Local Nature Recovery Strategy, the Council looks forward to working with our wide range of partner stakeholders in the spirit of collaboration to develop on the strategic aims, priorities and measures of the strategy. This will support the recovery of nature across the area as well as providing wider environmental, social and economic benefits. I am happy to move to improve the Local Nature Recovery Strategy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tilbury. And Mr. Whitford, will you second the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to second that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, I just wanted to add, this has been an absolutely fantastic piece of work done under the previous administration and thank you to Mr. Tilbury for actually acknowledging that because I think that's the first time in this chamber that our work has been acknowledged and not condemned. So thank you very much for that, I do appreciate that and I think this was done when I was the acting leader and this was a huge piece of work with us leading across LLR, which has been a great partnership work and I think where we've got to now is just an absolutely fantastic strategy and I hope that will help us to make us a more, the local nature recovery in this area in Leicestershire a lot, lot better. And just to mention that there is a launch of this strategy next week at Brookesby College, which I will be attending on behalf of the County Council, so I just wanted to add my opinion to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Okay, we will now take a vote on the matter and all in favour of the motion moved by Mr. Tilbury, please raise their hands. It's unanimous, thank you very much, motion is carried. Agenda Item Number Seven, Report of the Corporate Governance Committee. A Annual Report of the Corporate Governance Committee. I'll call on Mr. Bray to move the motion on the order paper.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to present the report of the Corporate Governance Committee for twenty-four, twenty-five. This highlights its role undertaken, its role and work undertaken to ensure the County Council has adequate and effective governance, risk management and internal control frameworks in place. We are assured by the report that this is the case. The previous committee undertook specific monitoring of the Council's arrangements for risk management, considered new contract procedure rules, resilience and business continuity activities, reviewed the Government's consultation on strengthening the standards and conduct framework for local authorities in England, considered plans to implement new internal audit standards in the UK public sector and considered procedure for dealing with allegations of a breach of members' code of conduct. The committee has also reviewed the reports provided by our external auditors, including the audit of its council and its pension funds and assessment of accounts, and have regularly attended meetings to answer queries. It also monitored the Council's internal audit activity, monitored the delivery of high-important recommendations made. I would like to thank the previous members of the committee for their interest and commitment to this work and to thank all the officers who supported the committee. Finally, I would emphasise the role of the committee is to ensure that public confidence in how the council is run and I look forward to playing an active part in that and I'd like to thank members for electing me the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bray. Mr. Cook, will you second the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you so much. Please raise their hands. It's unanimous, thank you very much, motion is passed. Agenda Item Number Eight, Report of the Scrutiny Commission. A Overview and Scrutiny Annual Report. I'll call on Mrs. Taylor to move the motion on the order paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move the motion on the order paper. I'm pleased to present the annual scrutiny report which highlights excellent work undertaken by the Commissioner and Leicestershire's five other overview and scrutiny committees during twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. I will at this point, I wasn't the Chair last year, but I will pay tribute to Michael who was the Chair of the Scrutiny Commission and really this report is his report but as I'm now the Chair, I'm presenting, so I just want to make that clear. So it's a very busy year and scrutiny undertook an extensive range of work, making a number of recommendations which have helped shape council policy and improved decisions, taking a way that's made a real difference to the people of Leicestershire. I'm always very impressed with the quality of scrutiny here at Leicester County Council and I think it's one of the most important things that we do here to make sure all our decisions are scrutinised and they're the best possible policies going forward so that the Council's always taken great pride in the role of scrutiny, which is a key component of good governance and should always be done thoroughly. Helping to secure efficiencies and drive improvements in public services also helps transparency for residents to be able to see that we are really scrutinising the decisions we're making and making sure there's nothing else that we can do better. The scrutiny process adds value to the decision-maker process, ensuring that transparency and helps make sure the views of people living and working in the county are captured. Looking forward, all the scrutiny bodies will work with Cabinet colleagues to look at and consider any new policies and strategy coming forward, propose and to monitor the performance, in particular the delivery of the MTFS in face of continual financial pressures. So as the Leader's just set out earlier in the answers to some of the questions that members here actually put in, not the Leader put forward, but questions we put in, there seems to be a lot coming forward that we'll be able to scrutinise, so I look forward to that in the coming year. This will make sure and that the best outcomes for residents and businesses across Leicestershire continue to be achieved as we have done in the past years. So just to finish, I'd like to thank all scrutiny members, past and present, for their excellent work, for the support of the officers, as we already heard here, we couldn't do any of this without our excellent officers that we have here in all our departments and the information and support they've provided to scrutiny amendments and to all our partners who have also supported and involved in our work, so I look forward to the next year and also I move this motion of our past year's work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Mulaney, would you like to second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I too am pleased with the level and quality of work that was undertaken by all the scrutiny committees and members over the last year. As the previous Chairman of the Scrutiny Commission, I can confirm that scrutiny has always operated as a critical friend to Cabinet colleagues in challenging its decisions and performance across a range of issues. Examples of the good work undertaken include the scrutinisation of the Council's interim plan for local government reorganisation, commenting on the Council's proposed customer experience strategy for adult social care services and raising concerns regarding the future storage capacity of the records office and the risk posed to the Council's current Arts Council of England accreditation if this is not addressed. Scrutiny has continued to closely monitor the Council's finances and delivery of the Leicestershire Transforming Send and Inclusion Programme and it has looked at the response of the Council and its partners to flooding, which continues to cause disruption to many of our residents, and it has considered the health systems urgent and emergency care services and commented on the Council's suicide prevention strategy. I like to put on my record, on record, my gratitude to County Council officers and partner organisations for their continued dedication and hard work throughout the year. Their contributions are invaluable to the scrutiny process and they each play a key role in supporting and keeping scrutiny members informed, answering some very challenging questions. I'd also reiterate the comments of the new Chairman, Mrs. Taylor, and emphasise that we all seek to get the best for Leicestershire residents and scrutiny plays a critical role in achieving this. We'll continue to engage proactively with Cabinet colleagues to help deal with the challenges ahead and I'd also like to add my thanks to Mrs. Page for her work as Vice Chair of the Scrutiny Commission last year and to Max Hunt and Neil Bannister, who were the scrutiny commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mulaney. Mrs. Page.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations to all of the Aldermans. Scrutiny has always been a very, very important part of this administration and this report and previous reports have demonstrated the commitment of this authority to democracy. But most of all, it was the commitment of all the members across all parties and officers who worked together to ensure a transparent and efficient process. I was very proud of being part of the team for so many years and I would like to thank Mr. Mulaney and all of the officers who at the time made outstanding contribution to make our scrutiny great and I hope it will continue. Thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Sorry, I didn't see this. Mr. Harrison, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say and endorse what Mrs. Taylor has commented and all the others. Scrutiny is critical in an organisation and particularly in our organisation, local government. I hundred per cent support it. I have sat at the other end of scrutiny quite recently, but that's democratic and it's right and it should be appropriate, so I hundred per cent support it and as the Leader of this Council, I'm behind what you're doing because I know it's the right process and the right thing to do. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's really comforting to know that Mr. Harrison has such high regard for me, keeps mentioning me every single meeting and my previous political parties, actually there's only two, much like yourself. However, however, in light of his recent comment just that he values scrutiny, would you agree with me that perhaps looking at some of the scrutiny chairs, I was recently in a meeting of the Scrutiny Environment Chair and the subject for climate change came up and he forthright, I think the words he used was wishy-washy and it doesn't exist. And obviously now, we have got a climate change policy within this council, as the Leader committed to that climate change policy and because the scrutiny is so, so important and if we've got somebody sitting in the scrutiny chair that doesn't share your views and my views...
Some of this is not appropriate, I think.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mrs. Taylor, please raise their hands. Unanimous, thank you very much, that's carried. Agenda Item Number Nine, Report of the Constitution Committee. I'll call on Mr. Harrison to move the motion on the order paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I proposed changes in terms of reference to the Council's overview and scrutiny committee as set out in the appendants of this report and any consequential amendments to the Constitution as required by those changes approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mrs. Taylor, would you second the motion?
Thank you, Miss Chair, and I'm happy to second the motion but I just want to put on record my concern about the loss of climate change from the name of our overview and scrutiny committees, obviously as just mentioned by Mrs. Smith, we do have a climate change strategy here at the Council and I'm just concerned about the message it sends out to the public that we've removed the name 'climate change' from our scrutiny commission. I'd just be interested to know if the Leader is committed to that climate change strategy that we have approved here and, you know, I'm just worried this is the slippery slope of us losing focus on climate change. We need to do our bit, however small that is, we need to do it sensibly, we don't need to bankrupt this council but we need to do our bit and I am concerned about the removal of the name from this overview and scrutiny. Thank you.
Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Chair. I share Mrs. Taylor's concern. I think it's quite a stealthy way of removing climate change from the whole thing. I understand we have to follow what the Cabinet members are doing but it should be looked at somewhere, particularly, and this is where I'm a tad confused, Chair, question B from Mr. Chapman specifically asks it's changing its name and Mr. Harrison's reply was matters relating to a changing climate and associated impacts will fall under the remit of the Environmental and Flooding Survey Scrutiny Committee. If that's the case, can we just leave the wording? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Sorry, Miss Pendlebury, sorry, I couldn't see your name.
That's okay, thank you. I just really wanted them to confirm, as Adam Tilbury said and I wrote it down at the time in the same meeting that we were talking about, that he said that all climate change will be covered, it is just simple wording. We believe the climate is changing and we do not believe in net zero. So will climate change continue to be part of it despite the name change? Thank you.
Mr. Gray. Mrs. Gray, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I would also like to echo the comments, I find the renaming of the Environment and Climate Committee to Environment and Flooding concerning and baffling. We do a disservice to our residents by not acknowledging the impact of climate change and its effects, such as extreme and more frequent flooding events which we are already seeing locally. I would really welcome the Lead Member explaining the rationale for the name change.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Mr. King, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I mean, obviously some of this makes some sense but I'm just wondering whether this Chairman is yet another edict from on high from Nigel, given that you, your colleagues at other councils neighbouring us in Leicestershire, for example Lincolnshire, did something very similar where they removed the word flooding, I believe, from a committee, which is, which, anyway, I won't get into all of that but I'm just wondering if this is what we can come to expect from the Controlling Reform Group is that basically you just do what your national party leader tells you to do and you haven't, it's not really what you think. Look, I'm just wondering how much this has been... Look, I'm just wondering how much this has been locally driven, and how much this has been driven from on high, from other people who aren't elected members of this council. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr King, is it? Sorry, Mr Tilbury, yes.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. At Reform, we believe in climate change. We're not sure humans have a great impact over climate change, and if anyone wants to discuss any of these concerns, they can come and speak to me. I see some people shaking their heads there, but like I say, I'm more than welcome for anyone to come and speak to me regarding the human effects upon climate change. And the climate change is staying in the portfolio, it's just we've just dropped the name. If anyone wants to speak to me about it in a meeting and go through net zero and how much carbon dioxide is in the atmosphere, and what humans contribute to that carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, and how carbon dioxide is affecting the planet, then I'm more than willing to discuss it with them. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Tilbury. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. No, I think it's pedantic from some members, probably one in particular. It is a project going forward, they have changed the name, they're still involved in various parts of it, but we have now upgraded flooding as a real key element, because flooding's going to affect homes if we're not careful come the winter months, and we've had this across Leicestershire on a regular basis. This isn't one that happens every now and again, this is quite regular. So we know we need the funding, we need the energy and the commitment to look at probably small engineering work. This is, we're not just talking about gullies, we've got to do something positive, otherwise we're going to continue talking about flooding. And when you've visited a home that's been flooded and you see the damage, it's shocking. To then think people are living in Leicestershire who think, my God, oh, we don't get flooded out this year, it was terrible last year, you know, how are people going to live in their homes? We've got to be constructive, and flooding is going to be a major part of what we can see and deal with. It's not imaginary, it's not something that might happen, it happens regularly, and the damage is colossal to people's homes and how they feel and their own security thinking that they may be devastated again. So high priority, hundred per cent behind councillor Tilbury. He's doing a great job, he's coming with a lot of passion and key knowledge, which is really essential. So wishing him the very best, and we'll support him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mrs Taylor, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I actually think this is a beautiful change in policy. We've had green subsidies in place for decades now, we've seen no decrease in our energy costs, bills are going up, flooding is still going to happen because the rest of the world is contributing, so I actually think that our party's policy to, you know, to focus, well, not to focus on net zero is actually the right policy. It doesn't work. We've had these stupid policies for decades, it isn't working, it's a pointless exercise, it really ought to be abolished. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Mr Fowler, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman, and I kind of just want to, as a summary to some of the points that my colleagues have made, I think the key thing for us is that with the name change, it demonstrates our commitment to delivering for the people of Leicestershire. At the end of the day, we're all here accountable to the taxpayer, so when it comes to making decisions on what we spend those funds on, it's critical that we make sure that we have our priorities in place. When it comes to climate change and net zero policies, I wonder if we were to ask the people of Leicestershire whether they were happy that their tax money was put previously on some arbitrary target that makes no real impact on a global scale or to any temperatures compared to other nations and larger authorities than simply a county council, or whether they'd rather their money spent on things that matter to them, the flooding, as Mr Tilbury pointed out, and to nature recovery strategies. I think it's important to remember that, as I said before, we are here to prioritise what matters to the people of Leicestershire.
Thank you, Mr Fowler. Mrs Bottomley, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would just like some clarification on what is imaginary in this situation, as alluded to by Mr Harrison, because, you know, we know that climate change is real, we've agreed that climate change is real, we obviously quite fundamentally disagree on why that might be, and I'm slightly baffled as to why we think flooding and all these other things are getting worse if it isn't potentially man-made climate change, and I would quite like some clarification on that as well. But just so I can explain to residents when they do ask me, what part of this is imaginary and what is real? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs Bottomley. Sorry, somebody's already spoken on this, you can only speak on this question once. Mr Tilbury once. Okay, so is there anybody else who wants to speak? Already spoken, okay. Mrs Taylor, would you like to add anything?
I think I am just a little bit shocked by some of the comments from the other side there, that's not what I picked up on when I'm speaking to residents as well. So, you know, we have been really sensible as a previous administration to only do what we can that's reasonable to get down to net zero from the council's operations, and I think we've really done a really good job of that. So to say it's, you know, it's a silly policy, and I'm just really, really surprised by some of the comments there, and I think they should be speaking to some of the residents, because I think, you know, people that have got children and grandchildren, great-grandchildren are quite concerned about the planet and what's going to be left of it. So, you know, as I said originally, we have not been silly, we've not thrown thousands and millions of pounds at this, we've been very sensible about what we've been able to do and very realistic of what we can do. So I am fairly shocked by some of those comments from the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. We will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mrs Taylor please raise their hands? Shall I start again? Yeah, we had a lot of questions there, didn't we? So this is the overall and scrutiny annual report. Sorry?
Constitution Committee. Page 18.
Page 18, that one? Got it. Sorry, okay. So this is agenda item, okay, agenda item number nine, Report of the Constitution Committee. Call on Mr Harrison to move on the motion of the order paper.
He's moved it, it just needs to be voted on.
Just the vote.
He moved, Mrs Taylor seconded it.
Okay, I'm catching up, guys. Okay, we're going to take a vote on Report of the Constitution Committee, item agenda number nine. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mr Harrison please raise their hands? Okay, that's 22 for. 27 against, voted against. It's not passed. Mr Gray?
Trying to be helpful, Chairman, if the administration would accept an amendment to reinstate climate change, I'm happy to vote for.
I'll second that amendment.
So any changes to the terms of reference and the designation of the committees will have to go back through the process for approval, so that involves going to the Constitution Committee first of all. This is the report of the Constitution Committee, so that will be something we'll have to go back to that, through that forum. Thank you. Chair, we're moving on to item 10 now.
Agenda item number 10, Notices of Motion, Local Government Reorganisation. Mr Mulaney, I invite you to move the motion.
Thank you. So the government insists that we must have local government reorganisation. Many of us wish we didn't have to go through this, many of us believe that services are currently being well delivered by the boroughs and districts in Leicestershire, but sadly we have no choice on this. So how do we go forward for the best way for the people of Leicestershire? In May's elections, the Conservatives stood for reelection on a clear-cut platform of one authority for the whole of Leicestershire, and the policy was rejected by the public as the Conservatives suffered their biggest defeat in a Leicestershire County Council election, losing nearly two-thirds of their seats. That result means that we should move on from the policy of one authority for Leicestershire, covering three-quarters of a million people, it will be too remote, too distant from people's everyday lives, that's what we believe. It will also be unbalanced, as the city will be much smaller at about 350,000 people, and this could strengthen arguments for an enlarged Leicester City that could potentially take over parts of Leicestershire that I believe all parties stood against. We have an alternative from the boroughs and districts, one that would see a North Leicestershire, and a South Leicestershire, and a Leicester City, all of whom would be of similar size, which reduces that risk of an increased Leicester taking over parts of the city. A single authority for Leicestershire for all of its services will create an authority of nearly three-quarters of a million people. People already feel that decision-making is too remote from their everyday lives. How much more remote would it seem if all the decisions currently taken by boroughs and districts are largely taken by such a large remote authority? The message from the government, which the county council has echoed in the past, is that plans for one council for all of Leicestershire will be good, because the bigger authority is the better. The government seems to think that with local government in huge financial difficulties, it can make councils that are too big to fail. But we remember that Birmingham City failed, and it was the biggest council in Europe, so I don't accept the premise of what I gather is going to be the amendment that is going to be moved later after this, after this motion has been proposed. Leicestershire County Council is facing a deficit of nearly £100 million by 28, 29. It's certainly the case that local government is in financial difficulty across the country, but is creating one huge unity council the answer? The government seems to think that single county unitaries will be more financially viable, yet we know from Shropshire, which scrapped its districts and boroughs many years ago, and created one unitary from the whole county, has been saying loudly recently, repeatedly, that it's very close to economic collapse, so it's quite clear that just moving to a single county authority is not the magic answer to the problems of local government finance. The government seems keen on these plans to scrap boroughs and districts and to create mega councils, in its belief that it will save money. Yet the evidence for this is far from certain. There have been local government reorganisations in Cumbria and Somerset that ran into the cost of tens of millions of pounds, and to do this for the whole of England, the whole country is likely to cost hundreds of millions, if not billions of pounds, at a time of difficult finances nationally. But that's where we are. We have seen in May a huge comprehensive rejection of the policy of one authority for the whole of Leicestershire. It was voted down at the polls, I know in my own area of Hinkley and Bosworth where the majority of seats went Liberal Democrat, there was strong support for our policy of opposing One Leicestershire, and we saw what happened in the rest of the county as well. So I hope today that the new leadership of the county council will take this opportunity to reject the policy of One Leicestershire, which was a very prominent policy of the previous administration, which lost the election on it, because one authority for the whole of Leicestershire will be too big, too remote, and too risky in terms of opening the door to city expansion into the county that everyone is concerned about. So I hope that the administration can support this motion today, and that we can push forward working with the boroughs and districts for a proposal that will see three authorities, the North and South Leicestershire, and Leicester City. So I hope people can support this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Mulaney. Mr Bray, would you second?
I second and reserve my remarks, Chair.
Mr Balls?
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I have the great pleasure of being at the LGA Conference over the last couple of days, and something I was reminded of is the power of collective councils working together, and that is something that I've been witness to as a borough councillor since 2019. It's the skills, it's the knowledge those councils have that make a real difference. I've been elected to this council now for two months, and there's a fundamental difference, not that the skills are any less, the officers' dedication is the same, but there's a different outlook, and predominantly that's to do with people and place. I know for a fact that in Hinkley and Bosworth, the officers know streets, they know people, they know services. We had a chat about Sylby, they know the same thing, I know at Charmwood, I know those people. It goes in Colville, it goes to Seyston or Thermiston or wherever. That's something we will lose if we go to a One Leicestershire. I totally agree with some of the comments Mr Mulaney said. How does a copy and paste approach fix anything? That is exactly what is being offered here in One Leicestershire, copy and paste, the same county, the same city, maybe give them a bit of extra, maybe, I don't know, a little bit of harbour, a little bit of Charmwood to make them happy. That's copy and paste, and it's proven it doesn't work. £100 million, wasn't it, Mr Mulaney? Exactly. We are caught between expansionists in the city trying to land grab and protectionists at the county. We had an administration who thought they had this tied up for 20-odd years, they were never going to be beaten, so let's keep what we have and not give it up. Well, they were proved wrong, weren't they? They had the biggest defeat in history. So we need something new, and this offers us something new, this two approach with a city in the middle. It retains identity. How does anyone in Melton know the issues in Hinkley and Bosworth? And if we're about action and making a difference, we need to retain that local knowledge. It's not about replicating services either, and I see in the amendment that's yet to come, there's this idea of replication of services. Well, that isn't true either, because already we share services. Look at Rutland, using our social services, using some of our expertise when it comes to transport, because they're not capable actually in size or with the staffing levels they have. So we're already used to sharing services. This amendment is, in my mind, fiction, and this, I went on the website quickly, looked at One Leicestershire, £30 million in savings, we've had talks from various councils about this, and it's absolutely not true, they're spending more money on technology, on infrastructure, and you mentioned up in Cumbria there, they've still had different bins in each areas, because they haven't got round to the bins yet. This is the mess this is causing. We need a new solution with new ideas, and if we're being forced to get rid of districts and boroughs which are working, and I'm surprised, I'm looking at councillor O'Shea, because he knows the great work at Hinkley and Bosworth that is being done, if we're forced to change how we're doing things, it has to be with something new, not a copy and paste approach that hasn't worked, it doesn't work, and it won't work in the future, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Balls. Mrs Bottomley?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like the opportunity to explain why I'm going to be supporting this motion and the North City South proposal for local government reorganisation. I echo comments made that actually I'm not convinced that local government reorganisation is going to solve the issues it's being ported to, but it is the situation we're in, so we have to make the best of it. I believe that it is important to keep democracy and decision-making processes as close to residents in our communities as possible, which the North City South proposal will do. I also support section B of this motion, which aims to record objection to any proposal that would involve parts of Leicestershire being taken over by an enlarged Leicester City authority. Many residents I have spoken to are passionately against this potential expansion and do not wish to see their communities becoming part of Leicester City. So for these reasons, I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Bottomley. Mr King, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I am somewhat surprised at Mr Mulaney and Mr Bray bringing this motion, but there again, I'm not, because it's very clear from what they've said that despite what they will no doubt say later, you know, we're all here as county councillors, but this is very clearly, they are, you know, in my head, they're acting as a Trojan horse to try and get what they and their district colleagues wish to see across Leicestershire, which is the county proposal off the table, so theirs is the only one, along with the city, whatever else is out there, to be considered by government. Now, I think that is, we could describe it as a lot of things, but it's not one I'll support. I don't think that's right. I think that all options should be on the table. When the government, when Mr Mackmar, the minister, gave his feedback, the government did not say it preferred any single option that had been put forward by the county, the city, or the seven districts, and they urged them all to continue to work to come forward with their final proposals. And they urged them all to continue to work, to come forward with their final proposals. Equally, I've not seen anything yet by any of the proposals that actually addresses one of the key government requirements, which was how to deal with the impending financial disaster, financial incontinence of the Leicester Labour and City Council by 2027/28. It doesn't address that. So what they've put out for consultation, which they're running at the moment, is all very well getting people to comment on it, but it doesn't actually tell us how they're going to address that, doesn't say how they're going to deal with adult social care, children's services, SEND. Some very, very big issues that we, as county councillors, are currently responsible for, and it doesn't address that. And in terms of the city council, yes, there was a suggestion many months ago that the city, and the city has put forward a proposal, that it wishes to, as we call it, land-grab, increase its council tax base, because it sees that as a way, no doubt, of increasing its financial viability. But what we haven't seen is if they did do that, and we have no idea how large that land-grab or council tax grab would be, what would then be the consequential impact on whatever's left? We've got no analysis, no understanding of that at the moment, because the districts haven't done the work, the county and the city haven't done the work yet, and so therefore we haven't seen that. So it's quite hard to form an opinion as to what is going to be viable, what Mr. Harrison said earlier, what is going to be, you know, what government is going to pick as the winner, in inverted commas, I'll paraphrase, he didn't quite say winner, but that's what he meant, of this LGR lottery. So I can't support this amendment, and I do urge members not to do so, because I do think if we take one option off the table now, that we would do a disservice to the residents of Leicestershire and Leicester and elsewhere, and because we don't actually know what's viable and what's not viable at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Charlesworth.
Thank you, Chair. In my campaign literature before the election in May, I didn't support any of the three proposals. I made it clear to residents I didn't support them and the reasons why I didn't support them. I think any of the proposals, the future savings are years, years down the line, any potential savings. And the language I've seen today from Mr. Harrison, it seems clear to me that he's had negotiations with the city, and some plan has been formulated that compromises some of the counties, so they can get the county bid over the line. I really feel that's going ahead. The feedback from Mr. MacMair was that we need to collaborate, and everybody needs to provide evidence and data, so we can get a formulation ready in November. And I don't like it, and my residents don't like it. I know I'm twin-hatted and shouldn't really be speaking on a parochial issue, but my residents are very clear, they don't want to be part of the city. And if Mr. Harrison and his colleagues are going to throw my district under the bus, they won't like it. I think there's little they can do about it. The only crumb of comfort I've got is, we've now had several U-turns from this Labour Government, and I pray to God we get another one.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gamble, please.
Thank you, Chair. I hope some of the Reform new councillors will support this, because the councillor for, the Reform councillor for South Wixton, the Reform councillor for Blaby and Glenparva, the Reform councillor for Norbertown, sorry, Bronston Town, these areas are under threat if you do not support this amendment, this motion. I stood with councillor Drarney in Odeby, which borders on to the city, like my Reform councillors are over there, against the proposal by the county council. I urged them to support this motion and stop any negotiation whatsoever. That's large part of the county council is taken over by the city. Please support this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Mrs. Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to pick up a few points on this. So just the first paragraph about the outcome of the election, where we lost our majority fighting on a platform of one unitary authority. Obviously, I'm going to stand here and dispute that, I don't think that's true at all. You know, that only affected a few of the county areas that we were fighting, and those were all around the city boundaries, you know, those in North West, this didn't feature at all. So, you know, we lost the election on immigration, and I think that's pretty much what everyone told us on the doorsteps. So I'm a bit torn with this, because I obviously don't support A, I don't agree with that proposal, but I do support B. So I am totally against any part of an enlarged Leicester City Authority. And that's what my residents told me when I was out door-knocking constantly for the elections, that none of them, in Anstey, mainly Anstey, obviously my other area's a bit further out, but Anstey was under threat. And every single person I spoke to in Anstey does not want to be taken in by Leicester City. So I'm here to represent my residents, so that's what I will be representing. And just one thing that hasn't actually been mentioned here, that was mentioned by Mr. Balls there, about what so-and-so got to do and so-and-so. I'm struggling to understand what Rutland has to do with North West Leicestershire in the North-South City consultation, because they're 100 miles apart. I don't understand what they have in common as well. So whatever model you look at, there are abnormalities that just don't make any sense. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is the splitting of social care in this as well. And I'm not going to blow my own trumpet, but I'm probably the only person in this chamber that has any experience of working in social care for over seven years in children's. There's no one else here that's done that. I know the impact of what would happen if we split social care, children's and adults. It would be devastating for our residents. So that's something I just will not support, the splitting of social care. And just out of interest, I have lots more time on my hands now, and plenty of time to fill in consultations. I actually went into the North-South City consultation. So I was going through with my opinion, and I got to the question, possible expansion of Leicester City Council boundaries. So that's actually in the North-South City consultations. So the question is, if Leicester City boundaries were to change in future, do you think a larger or more limited expansion should be considered? The only options are larger expansion, limited expansion, or no particular preference. There is no option within the North-South City consultation to say no to an expansion. So I'm a bit wary of what this North-South City is saying, because they seem to be, on one hand, saying they don't support a city, but actually, within their consultation across all the districts, it's the same consultation, they're actually talking about an expansion to the City Council, and you can't say no in the consultation. So I'm a bit dubious about their consultation, what responses and results they're going to get from that as well. So, you know, I'm definitely against the enlarging of the city, but, you know, the splitting of the North, I can't support. So overall, I can't support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Poland, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And probably very similar to where councillor Taylor is on this one. In terms of the North-South, Mr. Mulaney talked about One Leicestershire being too remote. The North-South, though, would put Uppingham in Rutland in the same authority as Ashby Delazooch. Quick Google search says if you're going down the 47, that's 40 miles and over an hour's worth of travelling apart, which is actually further apart than we are to, say, Birmingham Airport. Okay? So it depends if we consider ourselves incredibly close to Birmingham Airport, because that's what we're talking about here. I don't therefore accept that argument as valid. Any, I don't believe that a North and South would be more local necessarily than a One Leicestershire, because depending on where you are, obviously, you may well be actually closer to a number of places in the South, South area. So I reject that as an argument. The one thing I did really want to comment on, though, was the expansion of the city. I've talked a lot about the expansion of the city on the doorsteps in the recent elections, in meetings, online, and the overwhelming majority, overwhelming majority of people, I would say seriously north of 99% of the people I've talked to, are viscerally opposed to the expansion of the city. They see the council tax in the city being greater, they see the services being poorer, they see the focus of the city being different to that of the county. And the number of people that said to me on the doorstep, I moved to the county because I didn't want to live in the city, was huge. And we should be listening to our residents, and we shouldn't be forcing our residents into the city without their consent and against their wishes. I therefore, I'm so opposed to the expansion of the city, and I feel that this, as an authority, we should be there as well. So again, I would support B, but I can't support A for the reasons that we've said.
Thank you so much, Mr. Poland. Mr. Grimley.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to say, it's the residents in my division of Burstall, they feel very remote from the Charmwood Borough Council based in Loughborough, which is where it's based. They feel that we're on the edge, we're remote anyway from Charmwood Borough Council. They spend a lot of money in Loughborough, like all the boroughs do, they tend to spend lots of money in their sort of district centres or town centres, but ignore the areas on the edge to a certain extent. On the North-South, I have asked our Borough Councilors, do they know where the new administration will be for the North-South divide, or certainly particularly the North? And they don't know. It could end up in Loughborough, it could end up in Melton, it could end up possibly in Rutland, we don't know. So the local knowledge will disappear when these things are moved away. So I think that's something that's quite important. On the North-South proposal, I did pick up the Charmwood Borough Council meeting last week. I do like to watch these things, even when I'm on holiday and that sort of thing, but I'm a bit sad that way. The comments from Jules May, who's not here tonight, was that although their consultation is for a North-South divide, but they're still talking with the city mayor and the city about expanding the boundaries. So they're certainly not shutting the doors on having a Leicester City expansion, even though their plan, they go out for consultation, doesn't include that. So I think that's quite important, because this motion doesn't sort of get rid of that possibility, although Part B is very good. I mean, I do support Part B absolutely, completely. Again, echoing councillor Poland's comments, people in my division are completely anti- having Leicester City expanding into their area. They see all the benefits of being outside Leicester City, where Leicester City is basically broke. They're just really looking to asset-stricken the areas around the, just take the money out and pour it into some Peters Pet projects in Leicester City Centre. So people in my division, absolutely anti. I did speak to one resident who was for the expansion. It turned out he worked for Leicester City Council, so he'd obviously been briefed by the mayor on that. So I think it's, you know, I mean, Dan Harrison will know my view on this, he was here as part of the last thing. My residents are completely anti this. We've had a petition around the sort of fringe, we've got seven and a half thousand signatures. But the, as I say, the proposal, the North-South, doesn't shut that out. Now, if the North-South proposal, and from what the leaders had said, it does completely shut that out, I might be more sympathetic. But unfortunately, this time, I think the sort of North-South one poses more problems than answers.
Thank you, Mr. Grimley. Mrs. Page, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, in politics, it's always the here and now, and things always seem to change. I remember when this proposal was floated, Dr. Eynan, who's now sitting over there, and I were working on this in detail. And at that particular time, officers came out into the villages in my division, and they've all asked residents and parish councils would they like to see a unitary. And at that time, all the parish councils and the residents we spoke to said yes, because it was more effective, it was money-saving, and whatever else. Because a lot of councillors, a lot of people in my division found it was, their terms were turkeys wouldn't vote for Christmas, and they didn't think that we needed two lots of councillors. However, time has moved on, and we are now in a situation where the proposal includes a city expansion. And my residents are venomously opposed to a city expansion. They are not particularly opposed to maybe a unitary and not doubling up on all sorts of services and streamlining everything, which is a good way forward, but they do not like to see the city expand. And when you ask them why, they raise points like, excuse me, but if every government, even your administration, has thrown a lot of money at the city, the city has had more grants and everything, but it's been wasted. It's been wasted on cycle lanes and God knows what. And I am also a Harbour Borough councillor, and I find that we have to take additional housing from the city, we have to take their affordability, we have to the schools, you know, because there aren't any places. So why can't the city manage their money properly, rather than wasting it, and get on with the job they're supposed to do? So I'm standing here, and I know that it has been a Labour manifesto issue, and I think that this will happen. So let's make it happen and put forward a proper proposal, lots of proposals. So what is here in front of me, other than option B, I can't support either. But I also believe that we are not ready, and there are so many authorities who've got schemes already shovel-ready. And if I was the government, I'd put through the shovel-ready schemes. So in reality, this would give this council plenty of time to look at fleshing out all of the proposals, everything we would like to see, and putting forward, well, whatever the district's doing, whatever this county is doing, but not just a strategic idea, a proper, worked-out proposal. And as councillor Taylor said, social care, public health, and things are so important. I did it once, when I was a cabinet support member, only for a little while, and I couldn't do it anymore, because it upset me. And there's so much emotional things attached, and we got to look after our residents. And I think, therefore, we got to make sure that our proposal we put forward to government is properly worked out, that meets the needs of our residents, and not any political agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Page. Mr. O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I wasn't going to speak, but when it comes to an emotional subject like this, you know, we were thrown out because of the way we run this council. I divested. We were thrown out on an immigration issue, the boats. And that's why we were thrown out, not because we didn't run this council efficiently. When we look at the proposals going forward, I'm here as a county councillor today, I'm also a Borough councillor, but my heart lies in the communities of Leicestershire, and the best for the communities and the residents of Leicestershire. And I want to look at it on a whole. We've got a fantastic social services group here at this council. Our offices are one of the best. We've got a fantastic children's department, education, they're outstanding. I don't want to see that split up. I want to see that going forward. And the only way that I see that going forward is having one council for Leicestershire. I don't want to see Burstall, I don't want to see Glenfield, I don't want to see Thermiston disappearing from Leicestershire. We are One Leicestershire, and we should be working together as parties together to make sure that we protect the valuable services that we have at this council, that we share across the one council of Leicestershire that we have now, and that we keep that one council with those services. So I'm sorry, but I can't support this. I will only support one council for Leicestershire, and I do not want to see any of Leicester City taking away the valuable people of Leicester, of Leicestershire, for the city. I came from the city to the county 38 years ago, because I saw how the city was then. I saw how the council tax was in the city. I saw how the council tax was in the county. And, you know, my children have grown up in the county. And when I moved from the city, my council taxed halved. You know, we here were- You know, we here work very hard to make sure that our services are first-class and are affordable to what we can do. So I'm sorry, I cannot support this motion.
Thank you, Mr O'Shea, for that heartfelt speech. Thank you. Mr Page, please.
Thank you, Chairman. You wouldn't think that coming from Market Harbour, Western Foxtown, that we're actually particularly worried about this, but we are. And the reason why we are is because we see the effects of a creeping greater Leicester over the border in Odeby. We see the effects that that has on the pastures and green fields that we have in our beautiful part of the world, and we know that Leicester City itself has no interest in that whatsoever. So when I was going around the doorsteps, basically people were saying to me, we're concerned, and they were also concerned not just by what they heard about the growth of Leicester City and its creep, but also by the behaviour of Harbour District Council as well, in being complicit in the basic giving away of land to Leicester City, not actually opposing anything associated with a strategic plan to build homes that the area needs, but rather build for Leicester. That is a very big concern of my voters. I think another thing to say here is that the idea that somehow the county is remote is a nonsense. We deliver services into the homes of people with our social services, we drive kids to school, we do all sorts of things that takes our services into the lives of every person that lives in Leicestershire. I don't want to see any handover, I don't want to see any boundary grabs, no surrender of our towns or villages or services to Leicester. But at the same time, I also want to talk about what PWC had to say on some of the options that they saw when they reviewed this recently, and it lays it out pretty clearly, which is that the real crisis we face is financial pressure, driven by soaring demand in social care, children's services, and education. This isn't about lines on a map, it's about whether we can protect the services our residents rely on. And Leicestershire County Council delivers those services already at scale. We have the resilience, we have the experience, and the infrastructure to weather what's coming. But splitting us into artificial new units would only add confusion, weaken leadership, and waste money. The three council model distracts from the core mission, as I've said. I think we are stronger together, one county, one identity, and one future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Page. Mr Bray, would you like the second emotion before we move on to the amendment?
Yes, I can. I'll pick up on some of the comments that have been made by the opposition, and I'll make some comments of my own. And I think, I think what I would say is Phil King said that this is a ploy by, I'm paraphrasing, but by Liberal Democrats, to take a county proposal off the table. Well, guilty as charged, I wouldn't have put it on the table in the first place, and I think everybody knows that. I tended to agree with quite a lot of what Mr Charles was saying, in fact, everything Mr Charles said, pretty much in his motion. The only problem with what he said was, of course, is that Jim McMahon and others have said very clearly that no change is not an option. In fact, he told the District Council network, if you don't come forward with proposals, I will get out a ruler and a map. So it is very clear that the Labour Government are going down this route, and I've got something to say on that as well. We've had a lot, we've had a lot of comments from colleagues on this side about city expansion, and various communities mentioned about what we don't want, and colleagues behind me absolutely agree with all of them. It's a shame that your press release didn't say that when you were running the council, I have to say, but nevertheless, I'm glad your road to conversion and all the rest of it. City expansion, well, look, this has been put on the table by Sir Peter, and we all know why, because he's got these two fundamental problems of no land to build, and financial difficulties with his low council tax base and high social services costs. So this is why people are discussing it, this is why these discussions are happening around. My position is very clear, it is also the same position, incidentally, as has been mentioned, shared by Samir Hack and Phil Knowles, is that we should not be expanding the city boundaries. And to use my phrase, when we start going out, it would be a brave politician, in the words of Sir Humphrey, to go out, start telling their communities that they're putting forward them to be part of the city's expansion, because it will go down like a bucket of cold sink, frankly. People do not want to become part of an enlarged Leicester. And I think anybody who tries to do that won't have a mandate, I will face a backlash. Now, please, I won't be supporting the amendment, as has been said, I don't accept the premise of it, actually. We've heard a lot about agile social care, there is nothing to say in any of the proposals put forward by districts and others for the two councils, that social services can't be shared. You know, the county currently share services with Rutland. What I would politely say, actually, is if the county council had been more prepared to share services with districts, we probably wouldn't be £110 million in the red, frankly. So the attitude that the county council has had to sharing services and discussion with districts over many, many years has been appalling and has contributed to some of the problems. Now, I just think, the final comments I will make is that no party in this chamber has a mandate to start city expansion. And I hear the comments from the Conservative Group, whatever happens in the votes today, I would be more than happy to work with them and anybody else to try and put forward a proposal that stops that happening, because it is going to be incredibly difficult for the residents, it's going to be politically impossible, frankly, because people just will not accept it. But I would also say that the Labour Government doesn't have a mandate for this change, and this is what really, really has upset me. Now, whatever happens, the civil servants have made it very clear that they are happy with a 300,000-ish number. My personal view is that the north-south city is a much more balanced option, and I don't think, and I also think that it helps balance the government's desire to create unitary councils which are more efficient with keeping local government local. I think it achieves the best balance. And yes, wherever you draw the boundaries, and there's been examples of Melton and Oakham, and I get that, whichever way you draw the boundaries, there's always going to be problems like that. But I also don't believe that bigger is always better. And as my colleague here has said, people do not want a Birmingham-style mega council. You just have to look at the rubbish piling up in that city to see what an out-of-touch council can have the impact that it can have. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bray. As the last question, Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to move an amendment to this motion. I move the amendment and thank Mr Mulaney for his motion. I realise he has strong feelings on this subject, so do I. I've heard Mr Mulaney say that he'd prefer if there was no reorganisation, I've heard that before, people around me have said that. I understand that my group's view is that it would be better if the government's timetable was not so tight, I've heard that before, that's my group, it's everywhere. A couple of weeks ago, after I was elected, I met with the district leaders and the leader of Rutland. They gave me a copy of their plan, as if it was only game down, it's just one town, one game in the town, sort of attitude. That was how it was presented to me. Costs, savings, debt, backup of the plan, nothing. Neither have I seen any convincing rationale for splitting county council services, and it's colossal. I say it just like that, that undertaking would be unbelievable. A new administration, if it was helpful to have some principles on how we move forward on reorganisation, and I say that because I believe everything's happening. I was talking to them as a group, I thought I was opening, saying, right, we'll put our information on the table, share it, we all agreed it was a marvellous principle of honesty. I've been given nothing, but I understand all the negotiations are going on. It's good to have agreed with the city mayor that the best option is two unitary models, one city, one county, both authorities must be financially sustainable. Earlier, I answered a question for Mr Taylor about districts in Rutland consulting last month on their north-south split, the city's plan to extend its boundaries. I don't know why they did that, but it's all the more questionable when the districts have been talking to the city about boundary extensions. My amendment makes a point that we need openness and transparency in the reorganisation process. So I'm saying that we have a good base and a principle of one unity for the county and one for the city, but nothing of any detail has been agreed beyond that. If the government's timetable, plan to be submitted in November is to be met with the shadow elections in twenty-seven, there's a lot to do. However, after yesterday's parliament, we also need to keep an eye on whether the government will be able to deliver another commitment which will require legislation and parliamentary time. So in summary, my group cannot support Mr Mulaney's motion, I'm disappointed in the way the districts are behaving. There is a better way forward, and I move the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Bone, would you like to second there?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm happy to second the amendment moved by the leader. This is the biggest shake-up of local government since nineteen seventy-four. The decisions we make in this chamber and as an administration over the coming months will shape our politics and governance for the leaders of the future. I cannot support a split of the county of Leicestershire. My main concerns about the plans is that they will create financially unviable councils on an unsure financial footing. It will also break up vital county-wide services such as adult social care, and waste services, drive up costs, and create unnecessary waste and duplication. What people want is strong, simple, and effective local government that delivers, that is what this administration wants to achieve, but ultimately, these are big decisions, and I believe the public should have their say, and we should listen. So at this moment in time, we will not be committing to any plan, and we are exploring multiple avenues we could go down. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bone. Does anybody else would like to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Our group will be supporting the amendment, probably for all the reasons that I set out before, but I will be very clear that we will not be supporting an extension to the Leicester City boundary. So I hope the administration listen to that message and take that back to any of their discussions that they may be having. I've said probably all that I needed to say about the splitting of county services, we're not remote, we're right there in people's homes, we deliver right on their doorsteps. I will not support anything that splits social care, because I know the impact of there. I know where our service users are, having a north-south would split the council tax, but would put all our service users in one unitary and less service users in the other, so we'd have a really rich unitary and a really poor unitary. So it just makes absolutely no sense to split it. And I go back to this consultation that they're out for at the moment, it's not quite transparent and genuine, I don't think, with this issue in there about, they are asking about a Leicester City, so I'm a bit confused about whether they are supporting it or not. So we will be supporting this amendment, but I'm very, very clear, after consultation with my residents, that I will not support an extension to the Leicester City boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Grimley, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I'm not going to repeat everything councillor Taylor just said, but I do agree with all that she has said on that, particularly about the Leicester City expansion, so I won't go back on that. What I'd like to see now is some decisive action from the new reform administration, because we are running out of time on this, we need quick action, we need it now, and we need it sorted out. We have a ready-made plan that's already just about to go out, hate to use that phrase, but it is there, lots more consultations on different things or whatever, it's just going to take time, and we have, I think it's until November to submit this. We don't want to last-minute sort of panic on the thirty-first of October or something like that, or the last day, so we need decisive action. And we also need more proper consultation with the councillors here as well. And if we do have to have a extra interim meeting, I would certainly support that because I think we need to be kept fully in touch, and we need to know exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Grimley. Mr Galton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, thank you very much. Well, these debates are always difficult, and knowing what to do for the best, but I am clear about a number of things, and I made this clear when we discussed this last time, the worst outcome, in my opinion, is an expanded city. We know what the residents said during the elections, you can't get away from that, that was very, very clear messages. Yes, there is the key issues that various members have mentioned regarding the need for land and addressing their budgetary issues. The other side of the coin, unfortunately, is what services our residents currently in the county would receive if they were transferred into the city. The city has a number of failing services, it's not just me saying that, there are Ofsted reports which confirm that. There is the issue of the council tax, which has been mentioned, significant increase. There is the whole, there are no parishes in the city, the city doesn't understand parishes, it doesn't have to work with parishes, and parishes are the first tier, they won't be affected by whatever happens with this review. And for those reasons, and a host of others, that is the worst outcome. So turning to the amendment, I'm really disappointed in, in fact, really, I think that the leadership, the administration's not clear, because Mr Harrison seems to be saying in this amendment that he is now convinced, having said he would take time to look at all the options on the table and try and find a way forward where there was some consensus, there won't be complete consensus, that is clearly not going to be the case between the districts, the city and the county, but at least to try and find a few principles. He's now saying that he's conceded that the county unitary is the one, but then they have, Mr Bone said when he replied, that actually, we need to take more time, we haven't made a final, come to a final view. So I've got to ask on that, which one is it? What is the position? Have you been convinced in a matter of a few weeks that that is the position? Because that wasn't the position that you indicated in a few weeks after the election. I want to come back to the point, the criticism really, of the previous administration, Mrs Taylor, you signed a letter to the minister basically saying you would accept city expansion, and that was when you were asking for the elections to be cancelled. Thank goodness they didn't accept that, but that is there, it was done, goodness knows, the leader of Rutland ended up signing two letters, I think, and the one by the district and the one that you signed. Their position is completely untenable. But that was the starting point, and then you realise just how unpopular it would be, and you've changed your policy, and we're grateful for that, that is a good thing. But all in all, city expansion is the worst for that, but you are playing into the, by backing a county-only unitary model, you are playing into that because of the numbers game, because you would end up, I don't think it would meet the end government's criteria on the numbers, because you would play into the hands of an expanded city by backing that and breaking up the county. So the very thing you want to keep, which is the county, you would be putting at risk, you would be increasing the likelihood of the boundaries being redrawn. The government's preference, I might add, is for district blocks in that scenario. They would look, as I understand it, at breaking districts, that is the worst option, of splitting up parishes, or wards, or districts, and moving them into the city. But unfortunately, Mr Harrison, your amendment risks that happening. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Thank you, Mr Galton.
Yeah, just very briefly, Chair. I just wanted to come back on some of the opening comments that had been made by the leader and deputy leader. Look, there is absolutely nothing in any of the proposals being put forward by the districts that says that any service in Leicestershire has to be broken up. They could all be run on a joint service model. They could be... You know, Leicestershire Social Care Group, for example, it could be the same people doing the same job with the same budgets, perhaps not in the same building, so who knows? But there was nothing in any of the district proposals that said that, and I think having an ongoing discussion about that is sensible. I was disappointed in Dan's disappointment about some of the comments that the district leaders... And what I would say, and I'm probably going to be told off for speaking in the wrong capacity, but well, we believe in freedom of speech, don't we comrades? So that's what they will do if you allow Andrew... I think Andrew Tate should have free speech, I'm sure I'm allowed to have some. But anyway, so... But what I would say is that I think that there should be an ongoing dialogue between everybody because I think, and as Dan knows, there is a meeting being set up to go through some of the finances of the district proposals, because I do think that he does strike the right balance now. We might not agree on that, but that's where we are. And I did welcome Mr Bone's comments that there's time is going to be taken on this. The government have given us an unreasonable short timescale on this and I know that Mr Bedford raised issues in parliament, I saw him on this, about the government timescale, and I think we should back him in his campaign to get the government to elongate that process. But the final comment I make, on whatever we say settle on, the people who should have the say on this are Johnny Public. And as far as I'm concerned, no, there's nothing in anything the government is doing and anything any councils are doing other than providing the odd consultation that finally gives people an actual say on how they want to be governed. And I think that is incredibly wrong. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Bray. Mrs Bottomley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think there's been pretty universal agreement that it is not popular that Leicester expands its city boundaries. So the reason I can't support this motion is that that is not in black and white clear. I can't support the amendment. Until we have assurances that you are not going to support that, which is what universally our residents are telling us, I can't support the amendment to this motion. Thank you.
So in terms of... Obviously, very positive to hear the amendment and hear Reform, the administration's view that a one Leicester model is preferable, that's my preference too. And for that reason, I will support the amendment. But really, I'd just like to sort of think of the consequences thereof. So if we end up successfully, from our point of view, having a one Leicestershire council, what does Leicestershire or what remains of it look like after that if the city expands? So we talk about loss of a council tax base, we look at loss of business rates when we're already the lowest-funded county council in the country and I think the fourth that is funded overall. I hope I'm not speaking out of term and I know for a fact that senior officers are deeply concerned about what the viability issues would be on what remains of Leicestershire in the event of an expanded city. I share that concern and I think that if we end up doing a deal with... If the city ends up expanding at the cost of services for Leicestershire, that's something that I think the administration, I would ask you to really look at when you're considering... When you're talking to the city. I'm against, obviously, as I said before, I'm deeply, deeply against the expansion of Leicester City, first and foremost for democratic reasons, I won't repeat my previous speech. But in addition to that, if the city expands, we'll potentially leave a rump Leicestershire that can't look after itself in terms of its finances and, you know... And I think we do need to look beyond reorganisation on that point. So really, that's all I wanted to say, the amendment.
Thank you, Mr Poland. Mr King, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to go over everything I said before, I'm sure people would be pleased to know. But let's be honest, local government reorganisation has a long history, going back over, well, it's got to be, must be nearly 20 years, if not longer. The governments of various flavours have been trying to reorganise, do all sorts of things to local government. Some of that allegedly is to make local government better, improve it, and some of it is driven by financial considerations. But most of the time, it's driven by choice. Local authorities have a choice whether they wanted to go forward for reorganisation or not with other local authorities, whereas this government is hell-bent on it happening, as we've heard already, whatever happens. I am pleased that we're having a debate here at county. I've put my other hat on for a moment. At districts and boroughs, most of the double-hatted members in this chamber have been prevented from having any debate or discussion about the plans that have been put forward by their authorities because they've been put forward using strong leader powers and so they've had no opportunity to have any say in matters. Despite protestations to the contrary, I have not actually heard, unless I missed it, any denial that districts or boroughs are not discussing any expansion of the city with the city mayor. As I said earlier, we need all options on the table. That may not be the option the county council wants to take forward, but options, whichever group of councils want to bring them forward, should all be on the table and detailed analysis. Earlier on, we looked at the annual report of scrutiny and we colleagues on this side here talked about how important it was. It is, it's vitally important and it has a critical role here at county and elsewhere to scrutinise whatever plan, whatever analysis we come up with, so that our residents and we know actually what we're talking about getting into. And just following that on, public engagement is crucial and that's why we were asking earlier about when are we going to actually hear something so it goes out into the public domain, given that other authorities are consulting on their proposals, because public engagement is vital. Thousands of our residents have already signed petitions, one by my MP Neil O'Brien's got 7,000 signatures opposed to the expansion of the city. I know there are other petitions run by other groups that have also got thousands of residents signing up to say we don't want city expansion. So I think it is, does demonstrate, there's a lot of public interest in this matter and that's why it's very important that the administration does bring forward its plans, does make clear statements so that we all understand what is being talked about, what is being proposed. So I welcome this motion and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr King. Mr Lovegrove, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Definitely no city expansion, draw the line there, definitely. I'm very proud to live in Leicestershire. I don't live in North Leicestershire or South Leicestershire and I get the feeling that the district councils and the Liberal Democrats are trying to reinvent the wheel. I've been very proud and honoured to serve as a county councillor for over four years now and enjoyed being the role... Having the role of a county councillor. And I've been very impressed with the role that the officers carry out here from County Hall. They deliver county-wide services to the highest standards that have been recognised across the country. So there's no reason those services can't continue to be delivered with a single unitary authority across the county. So I won't be supporting the Liberal Democrat proposal, but will be supporting the Reform amendment. I would just add to that, Rutland hasn't been mentioned very often, but in any proposal going forwards, I would like to see Rutland included and have the County of Leicestershire and Rutland. So the administration was taken under the wing of Leicestershire as a county, but Rutland retained their historical and ceremonial aspects so that it's still recognised as a small county, which they're very proud of, but they would come under the administration of the bigger county of Leicestershire. So thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Lovegrove. Mr Smith, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I was actually going to speak on this issue, but listening to the conversations and as a former Children and Families Cabinet Support member, do have a little bit of knowledge on this. So first of all, I think we need to address some of the comments, maybe my Mr Bray reference, changing our minds. It was only in January, I believe, that all the districts put out a joint PR with us as well, saying that they were in favour of one unitary as well. So people do change their mind, but people change their mind when you obviously get information. So there's nothing wrong with changing minds. Secondly, is splitting the services. So let's talk about children and family services. If we were to adopt two-unitary with the jam doughnuts in the middle of Leicester City, you would then have to have two separate DCSs, Directs of Children's Services. Okay, so you cannot share, you cannot do the whole one, that's a legal requirement. Excuse me. So the whole point of the LGR is about efficiency. So if you are having two DCSs, how is that efficient? You know, we're looking at doing efficiency, one Leicestershire, one DCS, but also as well as the geography, okay? We're privileged to information, we know roughly whereabouts the children that we look after are. And it could well be that 30% are in the south, 70% are in the north or vice versa, okay? But you're going to be asking for a DCS with similar budgets to do the same thing for those people. That's not going to work. And as Mrs Taylor said, you could end up with one very rich authority and one very poor authority, bearing in mind that 70% of everything that we raise tax-wise goes into adult and children's social care. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Smith. There's nobody else down on my bit of paper, but is there anybody else that would like to speak before Mr Malaney comes back? No? Okay. Mr Malaney, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So really, just to sum up, yeah, our ideal position would be to maintain the existing boroughs and districts, so just Hinkley and Bosworth and the other boroughs, which we think are doing a good job. Unfortunately, the government has not given that option. The choice then is to what extent, if we want to think we remain decision-making as local as possible, do we want to have two authorities, which at least means that there is a smaller area covered, which means that there is at least some element of local accountability rather than one huge authority. In terms of the amendment, I have to say, I think the amendment does, from its wording, seem to bring, if it's passed, does seem to bring the administration into supporting one Leicestershire. I think that is the consequence of the amendment. It's fairly ambiguous from how it's worded, that if the amendment is passed, then it is effectively calling for one Leicestershire. And as has been said, in terms of the questions on services covering the whole of Leicestershire, it's perfectly possible for the new authorities to work together and to cooperate to deliver shared services where those are necessary. In terms of the enlarged Leicester, the original motion is very black and white in opposing an enlarged Leicester City. It's not so much the case if you amend it. And I would say that we have been quite clear in our view all along, I know Stuart has along with the other Lib Dem leaders, in opposing expansion of Leicester City. And that hasn't always been the consistent position from this authority. As we know, when the letter went to the government at the beginning of this year, it did include support from the then Conservative administration for an expanded Leicester City into the county. So the original motion is very clear on opposing one Leicestershire and also opposing city expansion. We do believe that if there's one authority for Leicestershire, which is going to be much bigger than the city, it will be imbalanced in numbers and therefore, in order to get a balance, it's more likely that the government will support an expansion of Leicester City. So if people are resolutely opposed to an expansion of Leicester City, if people do want to see at least some element of local government rather than one authority for the whole of Leicestershire, then I hope they can oppose this amendment and support the original motion today.
Mr Chairman, we will be requesting recorded votes on both the amendment and amendment. If the amendment passes, the substantive vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. So since five members have risen in their seats to request a recorded vote, the council's standing orders provide for that. I'm going to read out your names and ask you to indicate whether you're voting for the motion, the amended motion moved by Mr Harrison, seconded by Mr Bone.
Have a vote on the amendment first?
On the amendment, yes. This is on the amendment. Okay, so Mr Abbott, can you say whether you're voting for the amendment or against?
For.
Thank you. Mr Bailey?
For.
Mr Bloxham?
For.
Mr Bone?
For.
Mr Balls?
Against.
Ms Bottomley?
Against.
Mr Bradshaw?
For.
Mr Bray?
Against.
Mrs Broadley?
For.
Ms Butler?
For.
Mr Chapman? Mr Charlesworth?
For.
Mr Cook?
For.
Mr Crook?
For.
Ms Danks?
For.
Mr Gerani?
For.
Mr England?
For.
Mr Fowler?
For.
Mr Galton?
Against.
Mr Gamble?
Against.
Ms Gray?
Against.
Mr Grimley?
For.
Mr Hamilton Gray?
For.
Mr Dan Harrison?
For.
Mr Paul Harrison?
For.
Dr Hill?
Against.
Mr Holt?
Against.
Mr Innes?
For.
Mr King?
For, sorry. For.
For. Ms Knight?
For.
Mr Lovegrove?
For.
Mr Macdonald?
For.
Mr Mellon?
For.
Mr Mia?
For.
Mr Morris?
For.
Mr Malaney?
Against.
Mr O'Shea?
For.
Mr Orson?
For.
Mr Page?
For.
Mrs Page?
For.
Ms Pendlebury?
Against.
Mr Piper?
For.
Mr Piper? Mr Poland?
For.
Mr Pugsley?
For.
Mr Rikiki?
For.
Mr Robinson? Mr Ruddkin?
For.
Mrs Seton?
For.
Mr Smith?
For.
Mr Squires?
Definitely for.
Mrs Taylor?
For.
Mr Thorpe?
For.
Mr Tilbury?
For.
Mr Walker?
Yes.
Mr Whitford?
For.
The results are 35 for, sorry, thank you. The results are 35 for, 13 against. So basically, the amendment now becomes a substantive motion. Does anyone who hasn't already spoken wish to do so? Mr Malaney, you have the right to speak again if you would like to.
No, just to record the vote again.
So we now vote on the substantive motion, which, to remind members, is on the amendment moved by Mr Harrison, which you have already voted on. Can all in favour of the substantive motions...
Sorry, five have stood up, so we're going to do a recorded vote.
Oh, okay, sorry. I missed that bit.
So as before, five members have stood up, so we're going to do a recorded vote now on the amended motion, which has become the substantive motion. So as before, Mr Abbott? Mr Bailey?
For.
Mr Bloxham?
For.
For.
Yeah, good, yeah. Mr Bohm.
For.
Mr Balls.
Against.
Ms Bottomley.
Against.
Mr Bradshaw.
For.
Mr Bray.
Against.
Mrs Broadley. Ms Butler.
For.
Mr Chapman. Mr Charlesworth.
Against.
Mr Cook.
For.
Mr Crook.
For.
Ms Danks.
For.
Mr Gerani.
Against.
Mr England.
For.
Mr Fowler.
For.
Mr Galton.
Against.
Mr Gamble.
Against.
Ms Gray.
Against.
Mr Grimley.
For.
Mr Hamilton Gray.
For.
Mr Dan Harrison.
For.
Mr Paul Harrison.
For.
Dr Hill.
Against.
Mr Holt.
Against.
Mr Innes.
For.
Mr King.
For.
Ms Knight.
For.
Mr Lovegrove.
For.
Mr McDonald.
For.
Mr Mellon.
For.
Mr Mia. Mr Morris.
For.
Mr Mulaney.
Against.
Mr O'Shea.
For.
Mr Orson.
For.
Mr Page.
For.
Mrs Page.
For.
Ms Pendlebury. Mr Piper. Mr Poland.
For.
Mr Pugsley. Mr Rikiki.
For.
Mr Robinson. Mr Ruddkin.
For.
Mrs Seton.
For.
Mr Smith.
For.
Mr Squires.
For.
Mrs Taylor.
For.
Mr Thorpe. Mr Thorpe. Mr Tilbury.
For.
Mr Walker. And Mr Whitford.
For.
So it's thirty-five for, thirteen against, so it's carried.
Okay, the thirty-five for, thirteen against, so the motion is carried.
Do you want to have a break?
Might I suggest that we take ten minutes for a break? There isn't too much more, but I need a break if nobody else does. Thank you. Ten minutes, see you in a bit.
Hello, is everyone feeling refreshed? Okay, we're just gonna go on to the last one, which is the spending review. With the consent of the council, will Mr Mahaney move the altered motion set out on the order paper? That make sense? Am I in the right place?
Yeah.
Shall I try again?
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
It's okay, yeah. Are you happy to know where you are?
Yeah, I moved this motion, thank you. We've a new administration at Leicestershire County Council, but we're stuck with an old problem, which is what this motion is about. Our area, Leicestershire, has been held back by successive governments that have put us to the back of the queue. Having been the worst-funded county council under the Conservative government, we continue to be under Labour. And it increases pressure on the things that we all know need sorting, whether it's the damaged roads and pavements, the pressure on elderly and disabled people's social care, the pressures on special educational needs and public transport and flooding. And we see similar issues with the funding of other police, public services in Leicestershire, the police, fire service, health services. And the consistent theme running through both the Chancellor's budget and the spending review was the total lack of any reference to the need for road and rail improvements here in the East Midlands and particularly in Leicestershire. And there were many schemes locally which have been listed in the motion that we believe do need improvement. So I'm hoping that as a cross-party authority, we can really come together to say to the government, look, Leicestershire's been treated unfairly for far too long, it's time our area and its public services and its residents got a fair deal, and I hope we can join in supporting this motion today. Thank you.
Okay, Mr Mahaney. Mrs Pendlebury, will you second the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to support councillor Mulaney's motion and thank him for heightening the difficulties faced by so many of our vital services. Leicestershire County Council has been forgotten by successive governments for many, many years. We see this in how we continue to remain the worst-funded county council in the country. We need to send a message to the Chancellor that this has to stop now. We must call for the Chancellor to demonstrate that the residents of Leicestershire matter as much as every other county in the country and fund our county properly. We cannot continue to allow our police force to remain so under-resourced that according to the Leicestershire Police Federation, 20% of officers would like to leave as soon as possible. We need to ensure that our ambulance service can respond to the needs of residents in a timely manner and fire services are available when needed and our schools are maintained. We need to have the resources to support them. Last weekend, I visited a school in my ward, Batling Brook. I was shocked to see the state of two of the classrooms that have had to be shut, black mould growing on the wall, I have photos, an unsafe roof, holes in the floor, and in my opinion, a ridiculous method to apply for extra funding for repairs where they need to pay someone to complete a form and then get refused on a technicality. These children are our future, are they not worth investing in? We also need to have the resources to deal with the effects of man-made climate change that have resulted in flooding in all of our areas, as the experts across the world know, despite Mr Robinson's assertion that he isn't very impressed with anything to do with climate change, the two are intrinsically linked. We need the Chancellor to finally address this imbalance and ensure that Leicestershire residents' well-being, safety and future are put at the top of the funding league and finally bring some common sense into funding. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Mrs Pendlebury. I'd like to open up for debate. Does anybody want to say anything about this at all? Thank you, Mrs Page.
Thank you, Chair. I have great sympathy with the statements made in this motion, but in actuality, in the recent spending review, funding to local government exceeded expectation and the government also reasserted its commitment to implementing multi-year settlements to local authorities and to simplifying the funding process and making it fairer going forward. Further to that, there were funding increases to social and affordable housing, children's social care reform and adult social care. The government are working from a very difficult base, and I think it's important that we recognise that, austerity wreaked incalculable harm to public services and council budgets and we are still feeling its effects. And for this reason and in that context, I'm not able to support this motion.
Okay, thank you, Mrs Page. Anybody else like to speak? Mr King.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, there are parts of this motion that I don't disagree with, fair funding for the county council, absolutely agree with that. However, what's just been said is just an imagination, I think, because there is nothing in the spending review that gives more money to councils across Leicestershire and particularly the county council. It assumes that the county council will use its powers to maximise council tax increase and place the burden on local residents. And in fact, the Chancellor hasn't fully funded, Mrs Pendlebury talks about schools funding, well actually, in fact, schools funding has been cut in real terms by the Chancellor, by the Labour government. And as we saw only in the last couple of days, the Prime Minister can't even get his flagship legislation through Parliament without caving in to the wishes of his back-ventures. So I am under no illusions that the Chancellor is that, if that's still Mrs Reeves or not, I'm not quite sure after today's PMQs, obviously she's a very upset lady and I understand that, but, you know, what's going on at the moment with government, are they gonna listen to Leicestershire County Council saying, please give us some more? Where is this money gonna come from? Well, it's gotta come from taxpayers, all of us, either locally or nationally, one way or the other. So where is this money gonna come from? If it doesn't come from us, you know, if it doesn't come from somewhere else, so if somewhere else is gonna lose it, they're gonna protest about losing it. So there is no easy solution. Absolutely, we should be campaigning for, you know, fair dibs for Leicestershire, that we're treated on an equal basis as everyone else, unlike the... But the problem is, as I mentioned earlier, the government, and this is why I think Mr... the leader, sorry, Mr Harrison, this is why it's concerning me, that there's no comment about the government's spending review, sorry, review of local government funding, because the local government ministers made it very clear that they're gonna divert funding from areas like Leicestershire probably to areas that have got more deprivation. So straight away, we already know, the government's saying, you ain't gonna get any more money. If anything, you're gonna get less than what you're getting now. So we do need to put our case for not, why they shouldn't be decreasing what we get now, but whether we'll get any more, I don't know. I think, but it is really important that we do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr King. Mr Mulaney, you now have the right to...
Sorry, Mrs Taylor.
Sorry, Mrs Taylor, so I didn't see you. Sorry, Mrs Taylor.
Thank you. I was waiting for the administration to actually put their hands up and speak, but they're all very quiet today, so I'll step in and speak. I don't know what their views are on fair funding, et cetera, you know, obviously, we've been campaigning for it for multiple years, as everyone that was here before knows, and we haven't got anywhere. So there's nothing in here that we're going to not agree with, but I think I echo Mr King's words, that, you know, we're not gonna get anywhere. They're gonna send money to areas of deprivation, which means the city will get it, we won't, which gives us more reason not to expand the city boundary, because they'll have enough money, if they manage it properly, to survive. So, you know, we're gonna support this, but I don't know where it's gonna get us. And I haven't heard anything from the leader about fair funding or anything about police, fire, ambulance, NHS, social care projects, I've heard nothing for two months. So, you know, I'm not sure where this is gonna go, but, you know, I think the Lib Dems bring this forward and we will support it, but I'm not sure we're actually gonna get anywhere in it, but, you know, we'll keep banging the drum and we're happy to support it.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mrs Page.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the previous speakers have really summed it up, but I'd just like to reiterate that at this council, we have campaigned for fair funding for as long as I can remember, and I think I've been here for over 20 years. But even so, with having campaigned, we have achieved very little. But we have, as this authority, always performed well and delivered outstanding services for our residents. And as I said, I don't want to repeat anything the previous speakers have said, but I hope our leader of the council takes on board the real need that our words get put forward, taken to as far as possible to put us into, on par with other councils, because we can't keep putting the burden on our residents and increasing council tax, because it's the working people who are in the factories, who are out there, who are having to carry all of the burden for paying for all of the other services. And my residents who are out there working, they really, really struggle to make ends meet. So I will support this ambitious motion and I hope the leader and the leading group will take it on board and take it forward as much and as far as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Page. Mr Ennis, please.
Thank you. I'll take up the challenge, Mrs Taylor. I was shocked when I came into this council to find out that we were poorly funded, that we were down the league table. We had 14 years of a Conservative government and we've had 20 odd years of a Conservative administration and they couldn't even get the funding from the government. So for how we're gonna do this, I don't know, but I will support the motion because I think it's only fair that we fight for equal rights for our residents and we will try our best. And I've got to say to the Labour member that whatever's going on in Parliament, it's not gonna support our council. If the Conservatives couldn't get us extra funding when they were in power and we had a Leicestershire, a Conservative Leicestershire council, there's no way the Labour Party are gonna support us, they'll support their friends elsewhere.
Thank you, Mrs Ennis. Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, there's quite a few people in the chamber and all my former colleagues opposite me know the battles we had, fair funding, to Parliament, we did everything, and it's been hard. And I think the comments is, we've just heard, and I totally agree with the colleague, you know, if we couldn't win with the Tories, when you were Tories and we had 42 members here and members of Parliament everywhere, we've got absolutely no chance under Labour. It is serious and I'm worried about our finances and our future and I'm worried about the public, because what they said in Parliament, that, no, it'd be 5%, not 10%, but why did they mention 10%? You wait and watch what's gonna happen. They're gonna try and tax because they need the money, or they're gonna get us to tax because they're not gonna give us the money. So it's as simple as that. We're in a massive dilemma and what the Labour government's been doing is absolutely unbelievable how they've spent billions, you know, Kicos Islands, you give it away. Somebody said to me, what does it really mean, Dan? I said, I tell you, it's ever simple. I've got this car here, it's a lovely Jag, it's only a few months old, you can have it. You're joking. I'll give it, you're free. Why are you doing that? Because I think I want to. All right. And I said, but hang on, one condition, I wanna give you a million pound as well to put in your bank. And, you know, that is the sort of stupidity, in a smaller analogy, with what they're doing. The money's going everywhere, by where it should be going, into the economy to create new jobs, to create prosperity, they're not. They're using it stupidly, paying people that they shouldn't be paying, and we're getting nothing back in it. There's no constructive idea going forward. She can alter the limits on spending in the Treasury and she'll do all sorts, but what will happen is, the costs of the money that this government have borrowed and that previous governments borrowed, that debt is growing. And so what will they do? They'll start to charge more money. The interest rates will go up because of the government's risk. It is serious business what we're looking at and I don't know how it's gonna end, because clearly there is disruption in Parliament, because they want to give more and give more to the disabled, that's good, it's proper for the real. But I mean, we've got a nation now of people disabled, and it's just growing, growing at enormous rate. I don't know what it is, I don't know how it's happening, but we've got to think how we're gonna spend our money and how we're gonna get this country moving forward. At the moment, this country is absolutely looking stupid in the world. We're nowhere. You know, he may attend all these wonderful conferences and wander around and do all he does, but it's not driving this economy. So I support this motion and hope and pray that we can knock on a door and get some response, because I trust me, in the old administration, they knocked every door and got no. So here we are, we're back trying it again. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Grimley, please.
Thank you, Chair. Listening to some sort of people here talk about last 14 years, well, let's see where we were sort of 14 years ago. The Labour government had left a massively enormous debt, we're almost bankrupt to the point where we weren't able to pay employees and completely decimated the UK economy. Compared to the Lib Dem leader, Nick Clough, he came together with the Conservatives into a coalition because his coalition need to sort out the enormous mess that Labour had left us in then. So that's sort of the history, but people say 14 years of this, that and the other, just need to get it right and look at the context of where we were then. Going to here and now, we know that the Labour government and their spending review have said that councils will have to charge the full 5% council tax increase every year of their administration as part of their spending review. We know about the national insurance increases and everything else that has affected as a local council. So to say everything's rosy and things are fantastic and the Labour Chancellor, that's complete poppycock. I think we do still need to push for fair funding, whatever the thoughts are, we've tried, Dan Harrison knows that we've tried, he's been part of that, and we do need to keep continuing. I'm not sure how much hope there's there, but then if I gave up every sort of thing that I wasn't 100% of winning, I'd probably just be sitting at home and not doing anything. So I think we've got to fight and we've just got to keep shouting out for Leicestershire.
Thank you very much, Mr Grimley. Mr Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr Mulaney, for bringing this motion forward. It's almost two, oh, almost a year, just two days shy of the general election, something that I had quite an interest in, particularly in North West Leicestershire. And at the time, we were promised change. Everything was gonna be rosy, and we, you know, our new MP in North West Leicestershire came across that we were gonna have this, and we were gonna have the Ivanhoe Line. Well, that got cancelled pretty much straight away. Nobody was gonna be worse off, we were all gonna have more money in our pockets. Well, I don't know about you, but I'm not. No business was gonna affect it, we were gonna be pro-business, that's not happened either. And no tax increases. Well, we'll see what that's like later on in the year. So one of the things that I think Mrs Pendlebury, or Miss Pendle, sorry, needs to consider is that this whole council on the last term, regardless of colour, regardless of whatever political stripe, were united in one thing, and that was to get more money for this council. We had cross-party support, because we are here as Leicestershire county councillors. Yes, we all belong to political parties, but I think I've said before, there's more that unites us than divides us, and we have to work together. And there is no point in blindly following your political party if it's going to cripple the people that you were elected to represent. Conservatives, and as Mr Harrison says, there was 42 of us, we went against our own party, we battled against our own government to get more funding for Leicestershire County Council. When you turn around and you say that, well, you've given this and you've given this... Yeah, they have, but then they've taken back with two hands. So whatever they've given, they've taken twofold back. We are no better off, in fact, we are worse off. And I would implore you to look at what you've said today, put aside your political party, and think about why you were elected to represent your people in your area at Leicestershire County Council. Because every single one of us wants more money, better services for our residents. And I really do hope that you change your mind on that motion. So thank you again, Mr Mulaney, I'm happy to support.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Mr Poland, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman, and again, thank you, Mr Mulaney, for bringing forward this motion. I will be supporting this motion. I imagine most of us will be, because it talks about things that we've been campaigning for as an authority for decades, I think, for many, many years. Mr Harrison was absolutely right in that we've been knocking on this door for, really, since I was probably a child, at that sort of length of time. We had meetings at 11 Downing Street. I know for a fact, for a fact, that our MPs were having meetings on our behalf trying to get fairer funding in Westminster. And despite that, we've still remained the lowest-funded county council and the fourth lowest-funded overall, which I think actually just reinforces the achievements that we've had in terms of being the third performing, top performing authority last year and all the other stats that I gave before. I think that's no small achievement, given our financial situation. But what can we do? What's the alternative to continuing knocking on the door, continuing battling down the hatches? And I think Mr Grimley, you know, put the nail on the head there when he said, you know, if we just give up because something's hard, we get nowhere. So we continue fighting, we'll continue knocking on the door, until we get to a point, Mr Chairman, where the government have to decide what they want local government to look like, what do they actually want us to do? And then, once they've made that decision, they need to fund us properly. Because at the moment, it's just been an exercise in taking money, taking money, taking money. I've been a councillor here for eight years, and a councillor overall for 12 years. And every single year that we've come along, it's been cutting, changing and cutting. And you can only do that so far, and we've done it very, very, very efficiently. But the government of whatever colour, Labour at the moment, but our lot weren't any better, to be honest with you, needed aside, what do they want local government to look like, and then fund it accordingly. And I think that is one of the things that we need to be, as an authority, really commenting on. And I think that's potentially gonna come to a head soon when we have local government reorganisation. Because just changing the seats on the Titanic is pointless. We need to have a real root and branch look at what local government looks like.
Thank you so much, Mr Poland. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Mr Mulaney, you now have the right to reply to any of the points that have been raised.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I really do say thank you to everyone who participated in the debate. This is an ongoing issue where Leicestershire has been treated so unfairly, and the residents of Leicestershire have been treated unfairly. And we must continue to fight to get that fair deal for Leicestershire that we deserve in terms of the public services that residents rely on, the police, the health service, education, and all the other services. It's time government delivered. It didn't deliver during the last Conservative government. It's not delivered yet during this Labour government. We do hope the administration, the new one, will fight as hard as they can to get a fair deal for Leicestershire, because people can't continue to be unfairly treated and put to the back of the queue as they were under the previous government and are under this government. So it's time for a fair deal for Leicestershire, and we have to keep banging the drum on this issue, keep fighting for the people of Leicestershire, the residents we represent, saying that they deserve the fair services that everybody else in the country gets. So hopefully, everybody can support it.
Thank you, Mr Mulaney. We will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion, please raise your hands? Forty-two. Forty-two, motion is carried. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Those against? Okay, thank you. Okay, this brings the meeting to a close. My sincerest thanks to sticking to the...